I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In view of the high level of interest in the waterway car wash and gas station petition, as mayor, I am advancing the council's consideration of this matter to the beginning of tonight's The rest of the council meeting will begin in about forty-five to sixty minutes. We have a very large group here tonight, which is always good to see. We do have a maximum number of people per the fire code. We're willing to keep the doors open into the foyer and so forth, but we really need people to do a couple of things. One is be quiet so people can hear each other, and the other is to respect the processes underway here and the work that we're trying to do tonight, and to hold clapping and other outbursts to zero, just refrain from that, please. Some introductory comments on this matter before the staff presents the recommendations of the plan commission and building review board. I want to recognize the time, effort, and careful thought that's been put into this petition by all parties and through the course of many, many meetings. The city review processes can be lengthy and cumbersome at times, but repeatedly these processes have proven to work well and result in a decision that is consistent with the criteria of the city code, fair to all parties, consistent with the long-term comprehensive plan of the city, and in the best long-term interest of Lake Forest. The public hearing on this matter is closed and closed some time ago as part of the hearing processes. However, the council will invite public comment this evening at the appropriate time. Consistent with the long tradition of city council, all opinions are welcome. Please, however, again, no clapping or other outbursts. It really deters free and open discussion. So, to turn to this agenda item and to pick it up formally, this is an ordinance, consideration of recommendations from the plan commission and building review board pertaining to a request for approval of a special use permit to authorize redevelopment of property located at the southeast corner of Everett and Waukegan roads with waterway car wash, gas station and convenience store and related design approvals. This is the final consideration of relevant ordinances, and to present the matter, I would ask the director of community development, Catherine Zerniak, to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This matter has been before the city since October 2015. The process has been comprehensive. The building review board and plan commission, both have spent many hours hearing from the petitioner, hearing from consultants, and hearing from residents. And I know that all of you too received all of the packets that went to the plan commission and building review board and have received all of the correspondence which was placed in your drop box. So, I don't have much new to say to you tonight. I don't want to take a lot of time, but just a quick summary. The property is located on the southeast corner of Everett and Waukegan roads. Property is about an acre and a half. It is configured in somewhat of an L shape with a narrower portion approaching the intersection, a wider portion to the south bordering Lake Forest Chateau Development, which was developed without much of a buffer, and the Villas, which was developed to the south. So, it is a site that is located in an established commercial district and has been developed in the past for commercial uses. Again, just an air photo of the same area. Quick review, as I mentioned, the plan commission began its consideration on October 22nd in 2015. At that point, the plan commission directed the petitioner to do further work, in particular to work with IDOT to get some preliminary input. The plan commission then continued their public hearing in March of 2017 and made a final recommendation to the council in November of 2017. The council heard this initially based on the recommendation of the plan commission in December of 2017. At that time, based on the plan commission's split vote of four to two, the city council voted five to three to grant first reading of the ordinance, subject to further deliberations, considerations by the building review board, with direction to the building review board to look particularly at whether impacts on neighboring properties could in fact be adequately mitigated through design aspects. The building review board considered this petition in January of this year and then completed their work in June of this year, so this is now before the city council for final action. As you know, both of those bodies are simply recommending bodies. There's been many questions about why this petition has gotten this far. It has to come before the city council, regardless of the recommendations of the plan commission and building review board, this body must take final action. A quick review of the site plan, waterway car wash proposes a car wash, a gas station, and a convenience store. Again, the property is about an acre and a half. The proposed building, which would house both the car wash tunnel and the convenience store, is proposed at seventy-eight hundred square feet along the south property line, five islands with ten pump stations, ten gas station, fueling stations are proposed under a canopy. Employee parking is proposed along the east property line. A two-lane entrance to the car wash tunnel is proposed in this location. The car wash tunnel would be entered from the south side and exit to the north. At the north end, there, as proposed, are ten finishing stations, drying stations, vacuuming stations. These would be outdoors. The entrance to the retail store faces Waukegan Road in this area, and there are three access points proposed on the site, two on Waukegan Road, and one which would be a, the exit would be right only onto Everett Road. The exit nearest the intersection on Waukegan would be a right-in, right-out only. IDOT preliminarily looked at this plan. They dictated that the current four curb cuts along Waukegan had to be reduced to two. They dictated some of the turning limitations. They did dictate that an ingress, partial ingress needed to be provided on Everett. IDOT has not given final approval of the plan. No final engineering plans have yet been developed, awaiting final action by the city Just quickly, elevation of the building. It is proposed as a masonry one-story building. The building review board discussed the exterior materials. The configuration generally found the building to be in keeping with the surrounding area. The building review board had numerous concerns about the fueling canopy, its location, its height, and traffic circulation through and around that structure. What you have before you are two ordinances. One ordinance would approve a special use permit based on the plan commission's recommendation. The other would approve the design aspects of this petition, the architectural aspects of the building, lighting, landscaping, and signage. Both of those conditions include numerous, both of those ordinances include numerous conditions. In total, some of them are repetitive, but in total, the number of conditions exceeds twenty, which is not completely unheard of, but it certainly indicates that both the building review board and plan commission did not have an easy time looking at this petition, found it to be challenging, and in the end forwarded with split votes, recommendations to you and support, subject to those conditions. And I won't speak to all the conditions, but I just want to give a brief summary of the topics of those conditions. The conditions speak to hours of operation, requirement for removal of structures if the use or portions of the use ceases, noise mitigation, which is addressed through a number of specific conditions requiring automated doors that would close any time the blower is activated between each car, replacing windows off-site on neighboring properties. The conditions establish a not-to-exceed noise level off-site and establish requirements for monitoring and requirements for corrective action if in fact the noise levels are exceeded. In addition, the conditions speak to architectural refinements, which speak to further detailing on the east elevation of the car wash building, assuring that rooftop mechanicals are screened not only from ground view, but also from views from the condominiums to the south, the second-floor units. And the architectural refinements also speak to the canopy height and the depth of the skirt that would be around the canopy and serve to mitigate views of lights under the canopy. The conditions speak to perimeter treatment. The conditions require that a combination masonry and wood barrier be erected at ten feet tall. The masonry base of four to six feet tall was recommended by the building review board really for durability, recognizing that there would be parking, that there would be vehicle circulation very close to that fence, and we heard from the acoustical consultants that if in fact the fence, the barrier is simply wood, that it needed to be solid without any gaps. So, the building review board felt that a masonry base would help to ensure that that remained durable over the long term. Landscape screening is required as a condition of approval, and the building review board recognized that this site is quite unusual in that landscape screening, adequate landscape screening, in the opinion of the building review board, cannot be accomplished on the site. So, the landscape plan that was presented by the petitioner does propose plantings off-site on neighboring properties, not completely unheard of. There have been conditions where a petitioner has voluntarily offered to enhance landscaping on neighboring properties, but in those cases, it really was enhancement over and above screening provided on its own property. The building review board discussed the fact that since adequate screening is not possible on the site, that that really led to quite a bit of discussion about whether or not simply too much was proposed on the site. There are also conditions that speak to exterior lighting and signage. Importantly, neither the plan commission nor the building review board questioned that this is a commercial site, that it is important that it be developed at some point in the future as a gateway to our commercial district. The focus, and I believe the reason for the split vote based on the discussion, really had to do with whether or not this specific proposed use, the levels of activity expected, was simply too much for the site. And just to conclude, some options for council action tonight. Again, you have two ordinances before you. If you choose to do so, you could approve the ordinance granting the special use permit, and only if you approve that would you then consider the building review board ordinance. There's no need to move on to the building review board ordinance if the use isn't approved. Or, the city council could choose to deny the request for a special use permit, as we often do. If you do move in the direction of denial, we would recommend that you direct the city attorney and city staff to prepare findings to support your vote. We would then bring those back to you at a next meeting. You would have already voted at this meeting, but simply present you with a resolution that would allow you to ratify those findings that reflect the reasons you state for your vote. You do have findings and support in each of the ordinances. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Zerniak. I'd like to bring this back to the council for comments and questions, and I think in doing this, I'd like to give the fourth ward the last say on this, as it's a fourth ward project, so I'd ask Alderman Morris to begin.
I don't have any questions. I do have comments.
Yeah. Let's do them together tonight.
Okay. I'm going to vote no for this, and the reason being is that I've looked at the site, I've looked at the traffic congestion, which is my big concern. I've gone down to the Northbrook facility at least four times twice for a car wash, but just to watch the car movement at that facility. I've also visited the Everett location, walked around, and looked at the traffic reports that have been supplied to us, and I was especially interested in the in-and-out movement and how many left turns and right turns there would be. And I think there's just too much congestion in the area, as we've talked about in many occasions with the railroad and such. And the facility just seems to be, as Kathy said, too big for the site that they're trying to put it on. I just think it's the wrong location for the proposed business. I do want to compliment both the plan commission and the building review board in their efforts to try and make the proposal acceptable to the community and to the property owner. But I look at the resulting concept that was presented to the building review board in June, and it just became, to use the phrase, "a bridge too far for me." I would remind, like the director just said, it's a commercial property, so I hope that pending the comprehensive planning effort that we're about to undertake can lead to a better option both for the property owner and the community. I think with a comprehensive relook at the property, we should be able to find a viable development solution for the site, and I would encourage the property owner to really work fully with us and the community to come up with a strategic plan for the area that would work. So, with that.
Thank you. I don't have questions, but I also have some comments, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, although Kathy did a very good job on this, but this is really my reminder to myself, at this point, the context, the proposal's been considered three times by the plan commission, one previous time by the city council, two times by the building review board, and this is our second opportunity, of course, tonight, to review this petition. As with all building development matters, we consider a range of items, including the request of the petitioner property owner who has observed all of our procedures, the concerns of the residents, many of whom are here tonight, who have articulated thoughtfully and frequently their concerns, and the interests of the city in this location, which it has been noted is a very critical entry point to our community. So, that's my context, and I have a couple of concerns that are primary, and I'm going to talk about those. One is what Jed said, and it is about traffic. On December 4th of 2017, we approved this project to be sent to the building review board before returning to city council for final consideration tonight. On January 16th, we heard a presentation by the city engineer which updated us on an IDOT application for a turn lane at the Waukegan and Everett intersection. My understanding is that the density and danger of this intersection were what impelled our original application. Those are my words. Although I think I had been informed of this request to IDOT at some point in the past, it was frankly not top of mind for me. Further, I did not think this information was specifically referenced in the materials for our December meeting when we originally voted on the waterway project. It definitely caught my attention at the January 16th meeting. This intersection has been problematic at best for a long time. The turn lane will definitely help ease the traffic at the intersection, but the volume of expected traffic at waterway will not. I now believe that this location is not appropriate for such a car-centric enterprise, that this project includes both fuel and car wash elements does not seem the best use when traffic safety is top of mind, as it has become for me. My second concern is the landscape plan. I viewed the entirety of the BRB June 6th meeting and read all the associated materials. The number of conditions placed on the project for that group's consideration as well as for our own is worrisome. I am particularly struck by a highly unusual landscape plan, which Kathy outlined, which includes planting on neighboring properties. This plan has not yet been approved by adjoining neighbors, and it seems a very difficult plan to operationalize initially and to maintain. Further, it is not a practice that I would like to see the city approve going forward, one that becomes a regular practice for us. I realize that at the December 4th meeting, I expressed concern that this site be developed because it has been vacant for so long, and a number of you have quoted back to me my comment about it being an eyesore. While I believe that it remains an eyesore, seven months, in the seven months since the December meeting, and since I used that word, new information has persuaded me to find other factors of primary importance, and I will not support this project.
Nothing?
Go ahead. You're senior to me.
I visited the Northbrook site on a couple of different occasions, and I was struck by how much larger that Northbrook site was. So, I think that this site, given the size of this full-service operation and the inclusion of pumping stations, the traffic pattern within the site just seems really awkward to me, that cars would be pulling out of the pumping station while other cars would be seeking to come in to get to the car wash part of this. I think that's a highly risky layout. I'm also really concerned with the Northbrook facility's apparent violation of the noise standards imposed upon it on a much larger site. So, I just, even though the plan commission and the building review board and the petitioner have gone some extra steps to try to mitigate the noise, I just don't think it's going to be satisfactory. Our recent discussion about leaf blowers made me sensitive not just to noise, but the continuous noise of perhaps hours on end and how annoying that is. So, I just think this site is not appropriate for an operation of this size, and I think it would just be a problem, and I do not support it.
I, as many of you know, did not support this proposal back in December and voted against advancing it to the building review board. I also watched the building review board deliberate on this and saw the difficulties that they had as well, although I was open to possibly suggesting that it could be in some manner, there could be enough lipstick put on this car wash to make it acceptable. And I don't think that occurred, in my opinion. And at that meeting, and again tonight, I'd like to cite some of the specifics of the special use permit that I think this proposal doesn't meet. But before I do that, I want to sincerely thank everyone involved in this project, from the petitioner to the residents who wrote letters to us, sent emails to us. I apologize to those of you to whom I haven't responded directly. It actually became almost overwhelming at some points. The building review board's careful deliberations, the plan commission's careful deliberations. This was a great example of civic government in action, and I'm hopeful that we'll have the right, in my opinion, result tonight. So, thank you to all of you. It is a real testament to this community, and thank you for your participation. The conditions of a special use in a B-1 district, it must be designed to accommodate small retail and service businesses required for the frequently recurring needs of the persons residing in adjacent or nearby residential areas. By the petitioner's own admission, over sixty percent of the people who will use this facility are passed through individuals. The traffic study shall establish that the proposed development will not materially and adversely impair traffic convenience and safety. I have the same concerns that I had in December about ingress and egress. Again, the KLOA study actually gives an F rating and a D and E rating to some of the ingress and egress points. I don't know how we can move forward with a petition under those circumstances. The noise, I continue to have concerns about the noise. If, again, the petitioner's own studies show that residences on Mar Lane and the adjacent building will have noise levels above acceptable levels, to tell the rectory across the street that we're going to have to replace his windows in order for the noise to not be overly offensive, I find extraordinary and cannot approve a petition based on that. I would hope that Monsignor can once in a while open his windows and enjoy a balmy spring or summer day.
Mr. Mayor, can you speak louder? We can't hear a word out here.
I'm not the mayor, but I will try and speak louder.[1697.65][1697.65](LAUGHTER). I guess that, in addition, I don't like this as the gateway to our community and to our West Lake Forest Business District. I believe it will negatively impact the overall character of the area, again, in violation of what's required in a special use permit. And I'm very hopeful that we can find a use more appropriate for this area. I actually lived in the western part of our city back in the 60s and well remember the quaint character of that area, and I'm hoping that we may, through our comprehensive plan, redevelop that area and enhance it, keeping in mind the original character of that district and being true to it. And so, for those many reasons, I am again voting no on this proposal. Thank you.
I have no questions. I think I'd like to start my comments by referring back to the December.
Can you see it?
Sorry, okay.
Lean in, bud.
I'm usually a known loud talker, so my wife says. So, I'll refer back to the December meeting, and I'd like to state that, you know, that really was not necessarily a vote for the waterway approval. Waterway approval, as much as it was in my mind as a vote for process completion. And I think, as the mayor said in his introductory comments, you know, our boards and commissions, their approval process has served the city well, and that survived the test of time. And I think it was necessary to complete the process here. Further, you know, the acre and a half parcel was an eyesore and has been vacant, as Alderman Beidler said before. The property's also zoned commercial, and that zoning, you know, preceded the residential development. After losing Levels and McDonald's, revenue-producing developments are needed to make up for the loss and are attractive. Finally, a property owner does have significant resides, rights, especially when it's based on a special use permit recommendation from the Plan Commission. That said, the proposal has significant issues relating to traffic, safety, sounds, and lighting. The site is too small for what's proposed. Somebody spoke to the landscaping. I found it interesting that the landscaping was proposed on the residential property, which to me was a clear indication that it didn't fit this site, nor does the development, quite frankly. The proposed operation is also too close to the street and too close to the adjacent townhomes and apartments. Broadly speaking, a proposed development in this site, proposed development on this site, considering its magnitude, is clearly inappropriate, in my mind. Further, and sometimes more importantly to me, is the petitioner, not the owner or developer, has not responded affirmatively to many of the various conditions of approval as specified from, by the Plan Commission and the BRB. So I can't vote to move this process forward.
Alderman Moreno.
I would like to go last, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you. Actually, I was expecting to, being the alderman with this in the backyard, expecting to have the first comments. So I'll not try to be too repetitive, because I'm all obviously very happy to hear the comments of my fellow aldermen. But first, let me say some words about the petitioner. We do appreciate the petitioner coming forward, expressing an interest to invest in our city. Petitioner was very professional. It was a very laborious, long process, and we appreciate them making accommodations on several of the conditions that were imposed, and also admitting that several of the conditions that were imposed would present a problem to it. But they faced two major obstacles, as I see it. First was trying to show that this project would fit where they're proposing to put it, both in terms of size and the type of development. Second major obstacle they faced, look around the room, it's the people. It's the citizens of Lake Forest. They were very vocal, very well organized, very articulate, and they had an opinion, and they expressed the opinion, something that we obviously encourage as part of civic involvement for our city. And I suspect the petitioner would agree that the citizen response was simply amazing, and I commend the citizens for their response. Let me get down to specifics. Back on December 4th, when it was before us, I spent some time talking about the legal structure we're dealing with here. A special use permit, actually two special use permits, not just one, but two, a car wash and a gas station. And I talked about how our zoning code identifies what's called permitted uses. And we ramble on for several pages on what is permitted uses. And I gave the examples of those listed under the A, B, and C's, and I called it the ABCs type of businesses that are permitted here, that don't even have to go through the Plan Commission, that are contemplated to be a part of the neighboring business community. And our zoning code is even broader than that. It says that if it's a similar and compatible use, it is a permitted use. What we have here is truly a recognition that it is neither similar, compatible, to any of the permitted uses for this neighborhood district. It is a special use. And as a special use, we say that we have to examine these in terms of its impact upon the neighborhood. And several standards have been promulgated in our code to look at impact upon the neighborhood. And I'd like to walk through specifics here that I think are relevant. First, the development must establish that the proposed use and development will not materially and adversely impair traffic convenience and safety. It fails. Must demonstrate that the building can be adapted to different additive uses in the future. In the same vein, elsewhere in our code, it says, must show how the building and overall site can be adaptively reused in the future for an alternative use. I honestly can't think of anything that would comply worse than a gas station with underground hazardous material and a car wash. Another code provision we have, must materially advance the stated purposes of the B1 district, provide specific identifiable long-term benefits to the community. I hear the community saying, no, it's not there. We have to establish, maintain, and or operation of the special use in a way that's detrimental to public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. In my opinion, it fails on safety, comfort, and general welfare. The special use must not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, not substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. I've seen enough evidence to say that it doesn't meet that standard. And last code provision, must provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion, not maximize it in the public streets. It fails. We've heard arguments about, or I've tried to anticipate the arguments as to why it should be approved, and since I'm not sure we need to go into that, but all the arguments I heard about tax revenues, rights of property owners, anti-business, one, they're false, and two, they're irrelevant in considering what's proper land use. The city of Lake Forest was not built on those principles. We would not be where we are today as a beautiful city if those standards were applied. We had a prior gas station, quite a bit different, different time, different impact, and it's also not grandfathered under our provision, and twice before, understand, gas, car washes, I'm sure much smaller, were not approved by the city. Being an eyesore, true, but to think about who's the one that suffered the most with the eyesore, it's the neighborhood. It's the people who walk by there, see it day in and day out. Are we going to punish them by putting in a development that makes matters worse for them? No. I am optimistic that, if this is denied, that the property owner can look forward to hopefully coming up with other developments that make sense and are compatible with the neighborhood business district, and I'll do everything I can to support that effort. Meanwhile, I'm also hopeful that city staff and the property owner can come up with ways to ameliorate the eyesore, so it's not another seven months or another time period that we need to deal with this. One more comment on Gateway. A little more than two years ago, some of my fellow aldermen I know were at the college hearing a famous city planner speak, and I took these notes, not thinking I'd be quoting one back today, but the city, this city planner said, "In a gateway location, it should be a point of pride, and its aesthetics should complement our community." Good advice. We should keep that advice. Last thing is to talk about the citizens and their involvement here. They're expressing strong opposition to this project. We've received documents that read like a legal brief. We've received documents that go into the technical aspects of the noise, the safety, the movability, even the pedestrian traffic that needs to get around on the site itself, from parking to the mini mart. We've had information on property values. We've also seen many handwritten letters. I can pull them on my briefcase. Personal letters, personal emails of people. And you can boil all this down to one message. The people are imploring the City Council to deny this petition. It neither fits nor is fitting, and I will oppose it.
Thank you. I'm going to try and keep my comments brief, because my colleagues up here have all, I think, done a very good job. But I do want to stress how grateful I am to everyone, to the petitioner, to the owner, to the residents, to the Building Review Board, and to the Plan Commission. We wouldn't be who we are if we didn't all care enough to be here today and to be talking about this for years. So I think that's extremely important, and I'm grateful for it. I certainly agree with the comments that have been said here. I do not support this. I didn't previously, and I tried, frankly, because I'm a capitalist, and I like to see commercial development, and I would love to see us have something that we are proud of, that is an entrance to our city from the south. So it's on all of us now to be there, to help the owner, to find something that fits, that makes sense, that we will use, that we will want to use. And so I hope we go forward in that spirit. I, I'm very concerned about traffic and safety. Those are probably my two primary concerns. I've tried crossing Waukegan on foot, and I run. I do. I run, because it's a scary road. People don't respect speed limits, and as slow as I go, I try to encourage people to slow down, and they, you know, get mad and pass me, because I'm going two miles per hour under the speed limit. So we have a challenge ahead of us, and I don't know the answers, but I'm certainly, like everyone here, looking forward to finding them together. I think it's very important, and I certainly want to do that. I do think that this development, as I said, you know, back in December, it's too much for the site, and it doesn't, it doesn't favor the neighbors. And that, that to me is unacceptable. I can't, I couldn't possibly find a way to support this. So I'm going to stop there. My colleagues have all said everything that I have felt and understood as we've moved through this. But again, I want to thank everyone in this room and everyone not in this room, because you've all been working very hard and been very concerned about this project, and I thank you for your letters and your emails and your phone calls. Don't ever stop. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this point, as, as public comment, as always, the council is happy to hear public comment. However, in view of the commentary from aldermen at this point in the meeting, public comments, I think, would best be limited to new items and information directly pertaining to the final vote on this matter tonight. And again, a reminder that the public hearing is closed. The council's had the opportunity to review all of the correspondence submitted through this process, review the tapes of the meetings of the boards and relevant boards and commissions, and read the minutes. Please do not repeat information that's already been entered into the record and, again, has been contained in letters and emails. All opinions are welcome, and civility is expected. And again, no clapping and other outbursts. Speakers will be allowed three minutes each. I've received about 20 requests. We can do all of those. That would take an hour, at three minutes each. So what if we did 30 minutes of this, and I picked every other one? Pick 10, every other one? So with that guideline or thought in mind, let us begin. Public comment. Jim Monroe, 1030 Mar Lane Drive, Lake Forest, Illinois.
Mr. Mayor, I might also add, just for the benefit of the public, I think many of you have heard comments from the eight, the seven council members that are here, and I think there was someone wise once said, "Don't snatch defeat in the jaws of victory." So if you have submitted a piece of paper, and you have now changed your mind, and you don't think you need to speak, you can let the mayor know that you will pass.
Okay. I will pass, but you did the right thing. Thank you all. Well, Jim Monroe, brevity is always appreciated. You win. Christopher Hensley.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pass to draw my end.
Right. Thank you, sir.
I just ask if anybody who submitted wants to make a comment.
Yeah. Walter Wade.
I'll pass.
Okay. Jill Kaz.
I will pass, thank you.
All right. Richard Sugar.
I'll pass.
Okay. Let me do it, let's do it this way. Is there anyone who submitted something in writing that would still like to speak at this point?
Especially if you want to hear City Council clap.
Is that one?
Please, come forward. Identify yourself and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Tim Peer. I live at 989 Lakewood Drive, so very close to the site per se, so I don't have any qualms with the decision. But I do, my question, or my comments were related to the future of the site, okay, and what the use they were looking at. I'm not a futurist, but things are changing, okay? We are going to have more and more electric cars in this society. It is a given fact, okay? We are going to have driverless cars. We know it's going to be taking over what we're doing. I will, I've told my wife, you will buy one more car. That's it, okay? We will be driverless. So the challenge is what to do with that site, okay, and how we are going to use it. Because our traditional thoughts of using it for retail, or a car wash, or a convenience store, throw it out the window, okay? That is the challenge. So I'm happy with where this is going, but I would, if you would ask me, looking at a site for a car wash for the City Council, that is looking in the rearview mirror, okay, in terms of how to use that site. You have to look forward. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. Please, I look forward to your participation in our comprehensive plan review, you know, coming up, right? Over the next 18 months, of which we're going to pick up the review of the Westside Commercial District first. Oh.
Is it okay to ask you?
Please.
Good evening. I'm Gretchen Seidel, 1111 South Waukegan. Thank you for that advice, to, you know, not snatch defeat out of the jaws of victory. But I do want to say, you know, this is my first experience with City Council and all that. It's been a long process, as we said, since like 2015. I've really appreciated everything that you all have done in terms of looking at each side of things. I think it really boils down to like two types of people. The people that look at this from every single angle and realize it's a bad idea, or the people that just look at it like, oh yeah, we used to have a car wash here, or a gas station here, and, you know, they haven't thought it through. Like that gentleman just said, the question is like, what about the future? You know, that's where I want to like, think about what causes people to want something there. It is a real eyesore, and, you know, I just want to remind people that the petitioner, the owner, has control over that property as it is. As it stands, there's still old broken glass, old tile from the old BP station years and years and years ago. There's still old handicap sign that's up there. Pascuasius is still falling apart. You know, what can we do as the neighborhood about that? We can't do anything, but the petitioner, the owner, he can do something about that. That's what's causing the eyesore. That's what's causing people to want to put something up on that corner. So thank you all for the process. We, as neighbors, really appreciate, you know, your due diligence. And Mr. Stewart, if you could do something to make that property look much better, grass it over. it over, no one be complaining about an eyesore in the future. Thank you all very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Not seeing any. I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion to vote the ordinance granting a special use permit authorizing Waterway Car Wash in conjunction with a gas station and convenience store on property located on the southeast corner of Everett and Waukegan Roads, and approving the overall redevelopment plan, all subject to conditions as recommended by the plan commission and as detailed in the ordinance, limiting and regulating the site development and the operation of the business on the site. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for having a vote on the question of granting special use permit. And I'd like to add a condition to that, that if the approval is denied, that we would direct staff and city attorney to prepare specific findings in support of that denial for council ratification, so that would be the only reason we would continue it, but the actual vote would occur today on the issue.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote. City Clerk.
Alderman Beidler.
Well, I'm opposing that, I think. Is that correct? Am I doing this right, or am I voting?
Yeah.
I'm a little, forgive me, I'm confused.
Yes, the motion is in the positive. So if you vote no, then you will...
I need to vote no.
If you, right, if you want to vote against it.
Voting, opposing the project, I vote no.
No will oppose it.
No.
Alderman Beidler.
No.
Alderman Morris.
No.
Alderman Newman.
Nay.
Alderman Rumel.
Nay.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Nay.
Alderman Moreno.
Nay.
Alderman Bushman.
Nay.
Zero yay, seven nay. Motion fails.
We'll take a five-minute recess and begin the rest of the council.
Jelly beans, jelly beans.
Help yourself.
We weren't expecting, you know, they assumed we'd gotten...
Bad precedent.
Yeah, shut the doors. Are we all here? All right. Let us return now to the regular order of the agenda. Item number one for tonight, comments by the mayor. And the first item I'd like to address is the approval of a contract with Gov HR USA to perform city manager recruitment search, which is a matter that arises from the July 2nd, 2018, meeting of the PCA Property Personnel Compensation Administration Committee meeting, in which manager, city manager Bob Kiley informed the committee of his intention to retire after 27 years leading the city. The Property Compensation Administration Committee is comprised of myself, Jack Reisenberg, and Alderman Tim Newman. The search for city manager is the single most important task that the PCA committee and the council can take up. It's certainly the lead city staff appointment, and it's essential to get this done right. Therefore, an extensive process has been prepared that will unfold over the next six months, that will be managed by the PCA committee and overseen by city council specifically. The committee's work will be staffed by Deshawn Kalmar, Director of Human Resources for their city. And I've asked Jack Reisenberg to oversee the day-to-day activities of the search process in conjunction with Gov HR in view of Jack's lifetime, I was going to say experience, but it's been your whole life, I think, Jack, lifetime background in executive search. The PCA committee and council in executive session has also met with Heidi Voorhees, who's the president of the executive recruitment firm Gov HR USA, who has presented a proposal to conduct a search for the city manager's replacement. More specifically, Gov HR USA is a premier executive search firm focused solely on the public sector and is located locally in Northbrook. Ms. Voorhees has been involved with a number of department head searches for the city of Lake Forest through the years, and has outstanding qualifications herself. 12 years working, for example, at the city of Willmett, or the village of Willmett, 10 as the city manager. She's been the executive search business on behalf of municipalities for some 25 years, and with particular emphasis in northeast Illinois for virtually every, I guess, for every type of senior staff and city manager, as well as abroad national practice, including some well-known municipalities such as Austin, Texas, where most of the senior staff there has been recruited by her. The proposal you have in your packets here includes a thorough and customized process for developing the job profile and recruitment brochure, includes active recruitment and candidate screening, and assistance with the interview and hiring process. The anticipated timeline that the PCA committee and the council plans to pursue over six months starts right away. Over the next month will be the preparation of the recruitment profile, which will involve many, many one-on-one and group meetings with Alderman, citizens, and other interested constituencies, which is a very important task, to get the definition of exactly the person for the right role, doing the right job. And then, in the period beginning later in August, through pretty much the month of September, would be to solicit applications from candidates. And then, from about the third week in September through about the 20th of October, Gov HR will review the applications. And the week of October 22nd, the PCA would narrow the list to four to six candidates. And the week of November 12th, the city council will interview the four to six candidates, along with staff, interviews by the senior staff of the city as well. And in the week of December 3rd, the city council will conduct a second round of interviews with the finalists. And that is expected at the December 17th, a special city council meeting to be called on that day. The city will appoint a new city manager. The new city manager would report for duty on January 28th, 2019, and on January 30th, Bob Kiley, after 27 years, will set sail. He says he's going to live in Lake Forest. We're going to hold him to that, but he will have a suntan every spring from having been Again, in your package is the proposal from Gov HR for $19,000 as the anticipated fee. There will be some expenses in addition to that. And with that, do I have a motion to approve the contract with Gov HR to perform city manager recruitment search?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? We went over this at some length in the executive session. With that, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item of mayor comments is 2018, 2019 Board and Commission appointments. And this would be to appoint Mark Pascuazi as chair of the zoning board of appeals. This is a voice vote. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In light of the recent discussion on Waterway, it's probably appropriate now to talk about a celebration of sips and nibbles and music and community. And there's nobody better to talk about those categories than Joanna Rolick, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you for that. And we do have something brand new to bring to you, and we thought we'd toast you with a glass of wine today. What we've done is, the chamber for many years, and I have been at this for 21 years, so I'm not too far behind Bob, but what we have done is held many events over the course of the years, some of them public. We host 50 events a year for chamber members. So we're kind of good at events. And what we want to do now is bring something to Market Square. This would be a new community event to be held, as you can see on that slide, on Friday, September 14th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And what we're going to use as a venue is the new north courtyard in Market Square. We're calling it Lake Forest Uncorked. And what it's going to be is just a fun opportunity for people to get together. We joke about it being sips and nibbles and music and community, but that's exactly what it's about. And we're very fortunate that we have two members on our board, two members on our Board of Directors that you know well. One is Susan Kelsey, the former economic development coordinator, and the other is Phil Gader, who created the wonderful Welcome Home campaign that you have now that, promoting the city of Lake Forest. The two of them came up with this concept, and we're very happy to push it forward. So I want to tell you a little bit about it. It is designed to create a sense of community and hospitality in the heart of the downtown. We are also looking at doing events in other parts of the city, and that is something we're looking at for the future. We'd like to do something out west, off on Waukegan Road. I see Alderman Bushman giving me a thumbs up. But we'd like to do something out there. We'd also like to do something north in the Kilmscott Park area, that we're, kind of, our working title for that is a walk in the park. But that will be coming a little later. We're going to start with this event. We're going to use the venue of Market Square's North Courtyard. The slide is a little dark, but what I wanted to share with you, the top photograph is actually looking at the back of what was Sweet Pete's. So where you see that new construction, that's a peaked architectural detail with windows, is actually a new elevator on the back of the building, but you'll recognize the tower there. So this is a... So this is a courtyard that sits behind it, adjacent to the parking lot of Lake Forest Bank and Trust, which again, you can't see very well in that lower photograph, but I'll show you an aerial. If you bear with me, in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the Fountain of Market Square. You see the Forest Bootery is opposite that, and behind it, a little hard to tell here again, but the courtyard that we're talking about is also an alleyway that goes from Bank Lane. We have, we're going to be-
Joanna, is there, there might be a laser over there.
Oh, yep, yep, okay, thank you, Bob. This is kind of like playing with a cat toy. Okay, so, so basically, right here, this, this right here is Forest Bootery. This here, the fountain, coming in this way, this is what was the alleyway behind the stores that now is being finished off into a beautiful courtyard. This here is the courtyard where we just saw the photographs taken. What we're going to do is have people walk in right here, so right behind Forest Bootery, where there's a beautiful archway, just like what you see over on the other side, Williams Sonoma. So you would walk in here, you would check in, there's going to be the setup of some canopies, they're not tents, but canopies, covering food and beverage areas, and also Lake Forest Bank and Trust, that's located right here, has partnered with us, so they too will give us space, so we will be able to set up tents in these adjacent spaces, and they are, there is a pass-through, there's a gate right here, and one can walk around this way, so we will be using that, and also the courtyard behind the bank. So this entire area will be party central for that evening. An overview of it, just to give you a little idea of what to expect, so again, 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., we intended to be a showcase of local food and wine businesses, we have several that have already enthusiastically offered to participate. What will happen is, people will walk in, in that, you know, by Forest Bootery, as we said, they will check in, they will have been able to buy their tickets, if you will, or make their reservations in advance. So when they check in, they will show us IDs to, so that we're assured that they are 21 or older. They will be given a wristband and a glass that will be specific for the event, and they will be able to walk from location to location and get two-ounce tastings of a variety of wines from our local merchants, along with the food samples that are served by the local eateries, the caterers in stores. And I assure you that all of those that are serving alcohol will be Basset trained, and they will be provided by those businesses. We will also have some live music playing in the courtyards. Again, the admission, the RSVPs will be available, you can RSVP online, and the tickets can be purchased in advance. The attendance will be capped at 300. We wanted to do that so that we could manage the event for the first year. We'd love for this to be an annual event, we'd love for it to be bigger, but what we'd like to do is make it manageable by confining it to that section of the square this year, and also doing it in this manner. Again, guests will be required to show proof of age, and they will get the wristband and the souvenir glass. The hosts, now this is going to be organized and run by the chamber, and it's intended to be a fundraiser for us. We look for non-dues revenue, we are a dues-based organization, and we have at this point 418 members, which is wonderful, but we really need more revenue in order to do what we do, and we'd like to do more for the city. Market Square of Lake Forest is also partnering with us, donating space in a sponsorship, and Lake Forest Bank and Trust is also participating, as I mentioned, by donating their area for us as well. So that's our event in a nutshell, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Yes, so I saw on the map of the evening, and I'm very excited by this, I think it's going to be terrific, there was a VIP tent, so what's VIP, and what's the price of the tickets, and let's do a little selling tonight.
Got your name on it, Prue.
Yeah, 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 so what we're looking at doing-
Got your name all over it.
I'm sorry?
It's got Prue's name all over it.
I know, I know, I know, she's RSVP right after the meeting today.
No, 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 give a little more detail here.
Two, two, all right, yes. What we're doing is, we're going to charge $50 for admission, and $90 for VIP, which is going to be more food, area where you can actually sit, and it will be, it will be just a more comfortable area, and we'll get more to you.
So the, so the 300 is just people, it doesn't matter which category you do?
That's exactly right, that's exactly right. Though what we may do, I'm getting the quotes from the tents, I wanted to get your approval tonight, so that we can move forward with the quotes on the tents and the ordering of everything, but what we're looking to do really is, we can have up to 250, and maybe, maybe limit the VIPs to a certain number, so we will look at that, we will look at that.
It is a fundraiser.
It is a, all right.
Isn't that what you said to me?
Everybody can be a VIP.
Okay.
No, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
It sounds very reasonable, and it sounds very fun.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you've guaranteed that the weather is going to be fantastic.
It will, we'll put you in charge, Prue. Yep, I wouldn't do that.
Any other comments?
Well, I just want to say congratulations for bringing this forward. You know, you and I and Susan Kelsey, in fact, have spoken in the past about this, and when I saw this in the packet and heard about it, I was just thrilled, because I know this works successfully in other communities, and it's just a great way to bring the community together, and I wish you all the success in the world, hope we repeat it frequently and in different locations, so thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
And thank you to your committee, to who have been working on this.
Absolutely, well, and to Phil and Susan for having come up with this. And I have to tell you that, you know, what we see as best practices in other communities is the creation of special events that enhance the vitality within a business district, and our goal is really to bring more attention to our business districts, to bring this kind of, you know, this is vital stuff, and we really want to continue to do it, so I appreciate that support.
Well, I think it's absolutely terrific, and it follows on that oldest of Lake Forest formulas, which if you serve wine, people will come.
Please serve it, they will come.
So, no other comments from council? As this involves voting for a special use, or a special event permit, are there any comments from the audience with regard to this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion to approve a special event permit and liquor license, as requested by the chamber, to support Lake Forest Uncorked, to be held on Friday, September 14th, 2018.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next are committee reports, starting with the Finance Committee, and a certain Government Finance Officers Association Award presentation. Alderman Morris, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. This is another good story, following the last one. The city recently received notification that it has once again been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association, the national organization, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our FY '17 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment is a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. In the GFOA news release, it noted that the city's certificate of achievement for excellence has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit for full disclosure, to clearly communicating its financial story, and motivating potential users and user groups to read the certificate, our financial report. The city has received this prestigious award for 39 consecutive years, and the GFOA awarded the certificate of achievement to 338 organizations in Illinois. Now, in Illinois, you know, there's 7,000 units of government, so 5% of the units in government in Illinois received a certificate, pretty amazing. And the second part, Diane Hall, if you'd come up to the dais. We also are happy to award a certificate of achievement for financial reporting, which is presented by the GFOA to an individual designated as instrumental in their government unit's achievement of this certificate. So I'm very pleased to present an award to Diane Hall, Assistant Finance Director. Diane serves as the primary liaison to the city's independent audit firm, Baker Tilly, and she coordinates the annual audit process in preparation of the city's financial report. So I have a certificate, and we're going to have a presentation and a picture.
Okay, next, the council will conduct a public hearing on the city's annual appropriation ordinance pursuant to the city code of the city. At this time, the public hearing is open, and to present the item, Elizabeth Hollab, Finance Director of the city, will introduce consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2019 and approval of rollovers. This will be a final reading. Director Hollab.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. You'll recall that first reading of this ordinance was approved by the City Council in June. We're back tonight for the City Council to consider second and final approval of the appropriations ordinance. The City Council adopted a comprehensive fiscal plan on May 7th. That includes the city's annual budget, five-year financial forecasts, and a five-year capital improvement program. However, the legal mechanism for the city to authorize expenditures of public funds is the appropriations ordinance, which is required to be approved in the first quarter of the fiscal year and filed with the county clerk. So that is what is before you this evening. Included on page 40 of your packet, we have a worksheet that shows how the budget numbers then convert into the appropriations ordinance. Not everything in the budget is included in the appropriations ordinance, and conversely, the library and school district 67 expenditures are included in the appropriation ordinance, but not in the city's annual budget. So that worksheet is intended to show you how the numbers from the annual budget then convert to the appropriation ordinance numbers. The appropriation ordinance includes rollovers. Rollovers are items that were budgeted in fiscal year 18, and were either started and not completed, or could not be initiated in fiscal year 18. And so the departments request a rollover into the fiscal year 19 to approve those expenditures. You have on pages 38 and 39 of your packet, the detailed list of rollover requests by fund, and then those totals are included on the worksheet on page 40. In addition, the appropriation ordinance includes a 10% amount for each fund, we take the subtotal and then take 10%, and include that as a contingency item. The city controls expenditures to the annual budget, so this 10% is not included as available expenditures for city departments. However, the amount is included to allow for any unanticipated items that might be approved by the City Council during the year that were not foreseen in the annual budget. So that is just a mechanism to allow that to be included, and not run into a problem with the appropriation ordinance. So with that being said, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have, but otherwise, the action is requested that you conduct a public hearing, and then consider final approval of the appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 19.
Okay, any questions from council about this? Obviously, all part of the budget approval process we were all involved in through the many months. Hearing none, is there any comment from the public in the audience here tonight about this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back, and ask for a motion to approve the final reading of the ordinance and the rollovers. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Next, Public Works has a special presentation from Michael Thomas, which is to consider approval of agreements for a design-build approach to repair the ravine in Bluff Failure adjacent to the North Beach Access Road. Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works, is our interlocutor on this. Please.
Thank you, good evening, honorable mayor members of the City Council. This evening's staff would like to provide City Council with an update from the July 2nd City Council meeting, when we requested a design-build approach to address the Bluff Failure, as well as the ravine project. I'm quickly going to go through a simple general background, discuss the ravine and Bluff Failure background as well, again, the recommendation that we discussed on July 2nd, talk about status and funding for the ravine specifically, and then status and repair options for the Bluff. Then we'll talk about some modified recommended actions, modified being different than what is in your packet. This has been evolving over the weekend, we've been meeting with members of the Forest Park Preservation Board, they're here with us this evening, so we have some modifications and some changes that we'd like to discuss, and then obviously, open for discussion after that. Just general background for, you've heard this, but for the people at home, November 21st of 2016, City Council asked that we pursue a Forest Park Bluff Restoration Feasibility Study that was completed March 1st, presented to the Finance Committee at their March 13th, 2017 Finance Budget Meeting. From that point, we went ahead and budgeted the ravine project for the current fiscal year. Obviously, as the rain events happened last year, the ravine project expanded, so July 11th of last year, the project was this size, July 13th, it became larger, October 14th, it became larger, and we had to react accordingly. July 2nd, again, with the Bluff Failure, and we'll get to that specifically, but we brought a recommendation to City Council that we pursue a design-build. The design-build speeds the process up versus the traditional design-bid process. Also, there's a good amount of collaboration between the engineer and the construction company. There's a lot of value engineering that is done, but we're able then to be able to bring prices to City Council for approval in a very short period of time. Obviously, all of this was based on the Bluff Failure. A good amount of rain, we had the heaviest May and the heaviest June rainfalls on record, and then the evening of the 26th, we received over two inches in one hour, and there were various locations all throughout town that were flooded. The following afternoon is when the Bluff failed. To give just a very brief background on the ravine project, again, the design is complete, we are going to be receiving the Army Corps permit within the next couple of days, which is a wonderful thing, that's a very long process. Right now, we're talking about having construction begin August 1st, if not sooner, contractor is ready to go, and the construction itself should take about two to three months. The background on the Bluff, June 27th, approximately 5:45 in the afternoon, the Bluff failed. Again, this is adjacent to the North Beach Access Road. By 11:00 p.m. that evening, we had, with the help of Parks, Forestry, and Public Works, the road was open, we hauled all the material off-site the following day, but that is when we closed the road permanently, simply from, or concern about safety issues. AECOM, our engineers, our slope stability engineers, were on-site that evening of the Bluff Failure, they spent the following two days there as well. June 28th, the following day, Sally, Director of Parks and Rec, and various staff members, police chief, fire chief, we all sat down to figure out what are our next steps, how do we, how do we handle this? With the idea of trying to keep that beach open and, for that, excuse me. The background as far as the recommendation for City Council on July 2nd, again, we listed, and they're on the screen here, just a number of pros for us to be able to pursue a design-build. Again, primarily time, we're able to speed the whole process up, there was, over these past two weeks, a good amount of collaboration and a good amount of value engineering. of value engineering, where the designer had proposed, for example, a certain structure, manhole structure, and the contractor comes back and says, "It's a lot easier if you change it to X. I can get it a lot quicker." Those types of things, and cheaper. The con, obviously, is that we're waiving the bid process, but we believe, based on the emergency situation and not wanting this ravine project to grow larger with another heavy rain, that we want to address this immediately. As we discussed as well, the boardwalk on the south end is closed indefinitely. We have inclinometers in place to be able to measure any bluff movement, and that will continue. Representatives of the Forest Park Project Board, we met with them twice, July 16th today, as well as July 11th, and walked the site, reviewed all of the issues with them, and they're here this evening to discuss some concerns they have as well. Excuse me. So, the North Beach Access Road, the ravine, and then I'll move into the bluff. We secured the project cost from both AECOM for their construction engineering, as well as Keno Construction for the actual construction as well. Like all capital improvement projects, we add on a contingency for any unknowns. That project total comes to approximately $914,000. As far as the funding, we have $750,000 budgeted in the capital plan. We have savings from the South Beach Access Road and Ferry Hall Bridge projects from last fiscal year that will be rolled over. And then these two items, I did not note because, in our write-up, and I apologize, but we physically do not have the dollars yet in our account. Number one, Irma, the flooding claim. We are expected to receive approximately $104,000 from Irma, more so for the structures in the ravine that were damaged over the July and October storms and some of the engineering. And then, again, we were awarded a grant from Lake County Stormwater Management. Those funds have been, we have been told that we will be receiving those, but we literally, at this point, have not received them, but we will. So we are seeking this evening, City Council approval, to proceed with the ravine project with AECOM and Keno Construction, and then we will move on to the bluff status. Bluff status and repair, again, AECOM and Keno worked on developing cost estimates. There will be, there would be some engineering, obviously, that would need to be done, some upfront engineering with AECOM. They then will have their construction oversight services, very similar to what they did on the south end, as well as the ravine. And then John Keno and Company, their costs for restructuring that slope, regrading it, as well as a contingency. With that, this recommendation is based on us regrading the property with a two-to-one slope. If we do that, in the next chart below, I'm going to take you through the four options and why this is a concern of many people. If we were to proceed with this project, which there are efficiencies having the same contractor there at the same time, the mobilization costs, the timing of, we want to get this done. Sally and the staff at the beach want to get that drive open, so we have the time issue. We have the weather issue, that it could rain anytime, and that bluff, the adjacent areas could move. So there is a sense of urgency. The challenge with this, though, is that with this project, we would actually be removing thirty feet of the table land. So if you can picture where the bluff fell, to be able to acquire a two-to-one slope, we'd need to go thirty feet back of table land to be able to get that slope. Doing that will remove a significant amount of beautiful oak and hickory trees, and it's something that the Forest Park Project Board worked very hard to retain. There was absolutely no work done in that area. We've seen some comments and posts that the project had something to do with the failure. Had absolutely nothing to do with the failure. This is something they really worked hard and they wanted to keep. So the concern is that they're going to lose a good number, we would lose a good number of significant oak trees. So we're talking currently about different options. If we install a soldier pile wall, which is similar to the wall we installed on the south end, it would be taller. The one on the south end is seven feet tall. This would be thirteen. We would lose approximately ten feet of the table land. You'd save twenty feet, but your costs will go up by about a half a million dollars. If we were to install two soldier pile walls, one mid-riff, mid-portion of the slide, a second one up towards the top, then actually, we would not need to regrade that slope at all, and we would save a good amount, if not all, of that table land. But that increases the price now to a million and a half dollars. The fourth option that we discussed today was actually taking the North Beach Access Road, and as you drive down the road, if you remember, you take a hard right and you head south. We're talking about this idea of continuing to head east onto the beach, past the existing road, onto the beach, and come back to the asphalt parking lot. So in other words, the current roadway that goes into the parking lot would be removed, and it would give a good amount of buffer that if the adjoining areas were to fail at some point, that it would be safe. So that is the fourth option that we were talking about today, and that brings us then to our recommendations. So these are modified, again, from what is included in your write-up. The ravine is not. We are recommending that we proceed with AECOM and Keno to begin the repair of that ravine and have that completed by Thanksgiving, as planned, as presented, as discussed. The bluff were actually, again, based upon the comments that we received from the Forest Park Preservation Board, as well as staff, too. We're kicking around and talking about the idea of taking a pause on this and looking at other options to really try and make sure we have looked at every option that we possibly can to try and save the table land, but more importantly, try and save the trees. In doing that, those four options that I noted, we would like to come back to City Council, and I put down there at the bottom a special meeting. I'm not sure our city manager knows I threw that one in yet. I'll hear about it tomorrow morning. But to ask AECOM and Keno over the next month to price out those options. It is something that is a lot more difficult than if I, if we at staff level were to price out resurfacing a street. It's relatively straightforward. We look at the amount of footage and how much, how many tons, and we get a price from Peter Baker and someone else, and it's straightforward. These options take some engineering, and they take some thought, and it takes, obviously, time. For example, those prices that we're able to provide for the ravine and the bluff, Keno, I received those, I believe, at about six o'clock on Thursday night. And AECOM and Keno were back and forth for a week and a half, on the weekend, on the Fourth of July, trying to get, what is the number going to be? So what I am asking is a modified recommendation to ask the two firms to price out those options, but in doing so, it's going to cost money, and I'm asking for approval, to give AECOM $10,000, Keno Construction $30,000, to come back to City Council in a month, five weeks, and say, option one would cost X, option two, three, four. And that is it. So I, we met today, Alderman Morris and Alderman Beidler, met with members of the Preservation Board on-site and reviewed some of these recommendations. So with that, if you have any comments or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd like to, one question is, sort of the basic arrangement of options here is, for example, with the one moving the road further east, that's a large pricing exercise. You're constructing a road, much less the foundation for it. It says $750,000. I don't think that's going anywhere but north. The other thing is, to the extent the options don't do anything to the exist, the current condition, post-slide condition, you have, what, fifteen-plus feet of vertical face there that ain't going to stay there? So in doing the road, road to the east, for example, is it realistic that trees aren't going to fall off a vertical face after some period of time?
And I'm going to ask Bill Weaver to come up and talk about that. As we were talking, he acknowledged that, yes, part of that roadway extension would require us being able to secure that bluff. There will still be some work on it to do exactly what you're talking about, to try and shore that up, if we can, to prevent any future movement of the adjoining areas. But you're absolutely correct. You have that drop right now, and we would need to address that.
It's interesting, the width of this slide, you told me back in the beginning, it was about fifty-five feet or something?
Correct, sixty feet, yes.
And we're looking at million-dollar solutions, which shines a very bright light on one just overwhelming reality of this, by, just by definition of it being Mother Nature's earth and water flowing through the bluff and being the principal cause of a lot of these slides, you know, is that probably close to ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the entire length of the bluff, of Lake Forest Bluff on Lake Michigan, oh, how many miles of it, isn't even two-to-one, you know? It's, or if it is, it's sort of just barely there. And if the long, you know, the five-hundred-year or something angle of repose for those unconsolidated soils, sands, clays, et cetera, et cetera, the whole layer cake of it is a lot more than three-to-one, you know? It's probably four-to-one, five-to-one. So it's an amazing expense to sort of think that we're going to somehow protect, save, defend, and not have any risk in these bluffs, because that's just the way it is, and it's the way it's been for, frankly, since Man got here.
And that is a very good idea, a very good point, from the standpoint that this March 1st, 2017, report highlighted various locations along Forest Park that are higher risk. And as we work and speak with our engineer, his simple response is, "Do not dig into them. Leave them alone right now. They may move next week, they may move in five years, they may move in thirty years, but you don't want to crack that seal if you don't have to. We know about them, we're watching them, he's measuring the movement, if it's a shallow slide, or if he begins to see a deeper slide, so we're aware of it." But going in and reshaping that entire bluff will be a significant expense and possibly not necessary for many, many years to come. So it's simply, let's keep our eyes open and understand where the risks are.
Other questions?
Maybe at some point here, we may want to start reserving into the future for, I mean, I think these things probably are cyclical, and, you know, you'll get a run of them, and, I mean, you've had the rest of the bluff assessed, I mean?
Correct.
You say there's additional weak spots? I mean, this is an expensive asset.
It is. And as the mayor pointed out, this is not just Forest Park. Bluffs all up and down Lake Road, all the way down, you know, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff. Lake Bluff just had a significant failure as well. A lot of these, obviously, are on private property, but there's another project I know our Black Engineering is working on down in Glencoe, exact same thing. So, common, absolutely common, it is there, and yes, could occur again.
Yeah, it just, it just happens. I walked McCormick Ravine quite recently, and I saw four smaller, but big enough, bluff failures in there, in the ravines.
A couple of things. I would first say that in our discussions today, and I know in our discussions going forward, public safety is huge. We know that when, we were not anticipating this event on the 27th, and incredibly appreciative of the, frankly, just plain good luck that there was nobody impacted by that slide. And so that, public safety will always be our main driver going forward, and I imagine, so when, when we have a report, if it's on, if it's on August 20th or some other point, I hope we'll have the public safety and the cost and the doability of these things weighed for us. I mean, we, this is not something most of us know a whole lot about, although I guess we're learning more. I think I speak for Alderman Morris and myself when I say, I'm so sorry, it's word one again. I wish, I wish we could be spreading some of these unanticipated expenses around town, but we do seem to be having a run here, and we recognize that. We feel, again, very lucky to be living in a community that has shepherded resources so carefully for so long that some of this money, we know, is, was budgeted in our capital improvement project budget, and we'll have to figure out about the other. And we've looked at some options which might include trying to do some sort of a public-private partnership. We'll just have to see, because it's not, it's not optional to get this stuff done. We, our beaches are one of our most extraordinary assets, and we've all gotten used to being able to get down there with considerable ease. You know, other communities don't offer the same benefit, especially with roads at two ends. And we'll get back to that, I feel pretty sure. I don't think on the table is a discussion that says, "Let's not have a road there, let's just go with what we've got now." The public is trying to be, is adapting to what we've got going on. Director Swarthouse's staff is extraordinary. My husband and I keep a kayak at the beach, and we've been down there. People are doing pretty well. I don't think it's been a hundred percent of everybody being a good sport about what's going on right now, and it's going to, we're going to expect people to do their best at being a good sport for the foreseeable future. But we're going to get this done, and we'll be back with discussions about how to do it. And again, I wish one of you other guys in the other wards would just step up, let it be your ward for a while, but we'll keep at it.
Any other questions? Rob?
Thank you. First of all, question on option four, extending the road farther east into the lake sounds like an Army Corps of Engineers environmental study process.
The answer is, it may or it may not be. It is not automatic. The ravine was automatic. Ravine's automatic, Army Corps, Waters of the U.S. Extending it into property that we own, not going into the water, and not going that far into the beach area, that's something that Bill Weaver and his crew would need to look at a little bit deeper. We hope not. That process takes a while.
Second point is, I will, I will speak for the fourth ward here. There's no question, this is a fourth ward issue as it is any other ward's issue.
Thank you for feeling that way.
So don't even think twice about that. This is, we're all in this together. We want that beach. That is an asset that, there's no question. But that leads me to one other question. So we've talked about the bluff and the ravine. Are there other ecosystems at risk? Is the sand being swept away? I don't even know what to ask.
No, actually, the water level is very high in Lake Michigan now, and it is cyclical. We've had our armor stone revetment analyzed by a private engineering firm. There are some things that are in the capital budget, but nothing significant. It is actually doing very well. We have a practice of moving the sand around in the fall and the winter months, and then regrading it in the spring to protect the beach itself, and it works very well for us, so.
I will second Alderman Newman's point. We need a separate line item on this. We need a reserve fund on it. This needs special attention financially.
For this project?
No, for the future.
For the long term.
Better for the future.
Anticipating future projects.
Every fifty feet, so.
I know, but we're self-insured essentially.
Well, the only, I was just glad to sort of see additional options come forward, because being basically a lifelong resident, one of the features that everyone, I think, cherishes about this community is that vista, and you sort of diminish it if it's a gradual slope down. I mean, there's just something magnificent about standing at the top of that bluff and looking out past the unlimited horizon there that is good for the soul and inspiring, and I'd hate to lose that, and I think that was the direction we were moving toward with our more cost-effective options. So, you know, I think we have to really weigh those aesthetics when we're making decisions on this, although it is an expensive, you know, the retaining walls are very expensive. So that's my two cents, and I look forward to further discussions.
Rob?
Rob?
Yeah, I just want to compliment the director and his, his public works team. Alderman Beidler and I have been talking to him since that happened and he's, he and his team have been incredibly responsive and nimble in terms of thinking about options. What do we do? Getting resources, getting prices, figuring out different, different avenues of pursuit on this thing, being flexible. It's really been very impressive, so thanks very much.
You listed four options, I think it was. Is it too early to opine on which one you think might be the most effective?
Too early, possibly. I think a lot of us are keying in on option number four. There's gonna need to be, if we, if we extend that road eastward, there's still gonna need to be some remediation on that bluff. To, to leave that cut the way it is and just leave it open, I don't think that's, I don't think that's gonna work. We're gonna need to do something, but nothing anywhere near as significant as regrading it to a two to one or installing soldier pile walls. Because again, our concern as, as we've proceeded over these past two weeks, number one, weather, number two, time. So we're sitting here thinking, when is that next heavy rainstorm? When is the next heavy rain event or heavy rain month? And at the same time, Sally and everybody wants to see that north end open too. That's what's been driving us, but we're gonna reconsider that and take a little risk.
You somewhat answered the question I was gonna ask and it's a little broader than Alderman Moreno had asked, but when you're considering the different options, obviously cost is a big factor, but timing's a big factor. As you, I think, are indicating, I'll use a bit different terminology here, it's somewhat of a time bomb, you know? When's the next, you know, failure gonna occur? When can we prevent it? What can we do? So time is obviously a factor and, and quality too, you know? Will some repairs, you know, be, give us more comfort than other repairs? And aesthetics, yes, both from the bluff but also from the beach. And it may be where the slope looks better than the concrete retaining wall. I don't know. But these are all, you know, questions that would be answered. And, and following up on the Army Corps of Engineers as to whether, you know, any of these options would cause a delay because we do have to go back for further permitting and knowing the permitting process may make that option not viable.
So, regrading the slope or installing the soldier pile wall or walls does not require an Army Corps permit?
Or any permits from?
Any permits. Identical to the South Beach Access Road. We didn't need to require any permits for regrading that bluff. Again, extending that roadway eastward, that's something that we'll need to look into. It may, it may not need or require an Army Corps permit. The other question we're gonna ask is if it does, is there any way to somehow attach it to or tie it to the ravine permit that we're getting here in the next day or two? We're gonna ask the questions because that permit process takes a good amount of time.
But I think we should consider, Alderman Bushman, that even if it, I, I am not prepared to say if it needs a permit, we're not gonna consider that option because I think our obligation as, as city council is secure the, the future. I mean, that we need to always be looking at the future and for me, the future is more than, you know, will we have that road open next summer? Sure, I hope so. But if the best alternative is, is lowering that road, just, you know, take, I mean, that's a tough road now, that turn, that, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a tough road now. Maybe, maybe we almost get a two-for if we, if we help preserve the bluff and we give ourselves a little more reasonable grade on that road going down. If that takes longer, we may have to make the case to the community that doing the permitting and taking longer is the right thing to do in the big picture. So let's not think, I'd, I'd rather we not think that, oh, well, if it needs a permit, we're not gonna do it. Because that will not be my inclination if I think this is a better alternative going forward and, but we may need to make that case to the community because we may be looking at, I hope not, I really hope not, but we could be looking at another season. So let's, Sally, I'm sorry that you had to hear me say that, but I think the best solution is the one we want. Certainly, we want one that we can, we can afford and figure out how to afford, but, and less permitting is appealing, but let's, let's, let's keep open minds on what the best solution long-term is for that, for that spot.
I was emphasizing more the timing of it and.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I.
Get the fix sooner or later.
In our minds, I want us all to be prepared for this could take a while.
No, certainly the best solution is the one we all should be in favor of.
Exactly.
So I, bringing it back here, I think we're back to one motion here, right? Just for the planning funds at this time?
Well, I heard Mr. Thomas say two. He would like for council approval to proceed with the ravine project and second to approve an expenditure of funds to Keno and AECOM to do planning and come back at a special meeting date, which we will poll the council and see if that August 20 date works. For majority of the council.
When, when you say the ravine project, I'm not.
This, well, we call it the South Beach Access Road Ravine Project. That's the one that we've been working on for the last two years and have the permit for. And then the bluff project, we will come back to you at the August 20.
Already approved. I mean, I don't see it in the agenda to approve that.
No, that was something he added in his presentation, option four, I guess.
Well, the, the recommended.
Can you go back to that, Mike, on your slide?
One of the, we have two recommendations. One, to approve.
Mike, why don't you put up the slide that had them?
There's three, actually.
There it is. Go with three. It's all right.
So, again, proceed with the repair of the ravine with the design-build option with AECOM and Keno Construction, as it is noted in the agenda, along with a contingency. That, we are not recommending any changes to. We're recommending that we proceed with those immediately. Number two, with regards to the bluff, we're asking for $10,000 for AECOM and $30,000 for Keno so they can evaluate these options further, put together pricing, and come back hopefully within a four or five-week period with a better understanding of the options, their challenges, and their estimated costs. So two, two ways.
And Mike, just so you could clarify, the, the write-up in the packet had different numbers because it included both the ravine and the bluff. Can you remind us as to the two numbers for number one and number two?
Sure. The ravine repair and engineering is, I'm gonna look at the page here. I believe page nine on your council agenda. The ravine pair and the bluff repair, $1,161,000, $1,160,100.
Yeah, but that's not what's being approved here this evening.
No, because that includes the bluff failure.
Right.
No, it, correct.
So it's 788.
I think you have a slide earlier that explained the cost.
I do too. Yeah. Here we go.
One more? There you go.
Yeah, 788,900.
There you go.
Well, it's the 913,990.
So that includes the 10%, the 10% contingency.
Yeah.
So, the engineering, the construction engineering, along with the project itself and the 10% construction engineering, $913,990. That is for the ravine and then the pricing, the four options is something as number two.
It would look to me that the funds secured equals 996 versus an estimate of 914,000. We have some room in there to approve the second part of those, right? And the total, the second part was 40,000, 10 and 30?
Correct.
All right. Could I make a motion to that effect?
Would you state the motion clearly and succinctly?
Okay. Part one of the motion is approval of 913,990 for repair of the South Beach Access Road Ravine. Second part is funds totaling $40,000 to two contractors for work designing a repair of the Nor, North Beach Access Road Bluff. Nothing but net.
Is there a second? Back it.
Quick clarification. When we talk about the project funds secured, are these ways of funding the 913 or 914,000? Is that what we're talking about?
That's what I sourced.
Source from. So it's not something, including like the Irma flooding damage claim, I, I view that as an insurance settlement that we'd be getting there. And these are, so the source of funds would be from those, those elements. And as we said, there's ample money there to cover that 914 plus the 40,000.
Yeah. 996 under the citation here. So we have a second and this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Both motions carry.
Mr. Mayor, I might just add, you may have some people in the audience who may want to speak. I know you already voted on it, but I don't know if they are interested in.
I just wait until those, some of those assessments are made.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Joan or Bob, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, would.
Four people. Joan Dupre, 999 South Ringwood. I am president of the Forest Park Preservation Board and I sent a letter to all of you today stating our concerns. And I met this afternoon with Mike and I think he's addressed most of our concerns was maybe wait, look at other options, really thoroughly vet this because we would hate to lose that grove of oak trees at the top. It's such a unique part of Forest Park and we spent a lot of money specifically preserving and not touching that area because it is so special. And we just want to be sure you don't rush because this, it was a shock that this happened and, and don't react too quickly, but yet you have to be concerned about the safety and we understand that. And, you know, if the road's closed for a year, that might just happen. And I think most residents are very understanding that they prefer you do, your due diligence rather than rush to find a solution. But I don't, I'm not gonna go through this because basically, I think you've heard all our concerns, but Bob might want to say a few words. He's on our board and a contributing member.
Thank you, Madam Chair and distinguished mayor and Alderman. Thank you very much for the opportunity to say a few words. I live at 676 Lake Road. It's the home that's under construction there. Two years ago, Winnie and I looked at what the park was. We lived right square across from the corner of Spring and Lake. And we just looked at this beautiful stand of trees to the south, the open area and this magnificent wood, oak woodlands to the north. And then we said, okay, let's bite the bullet. The $10 million was invested roughly in this park to make it happen is magnificent. We're now challenged by the possible, you know, problem of one part of it that is the anchor at the north side, the gorgeous oak forest. So my passionate plea is that we do everything we can innovatively, creatively, I'll be glad to, you know, be a part of a subcommittee or whatever it is that can work on a constructive, you know, way that we can keep that forest. And you have something here combined with the beach that defines our great city of Lake Forest, that park and that beach. So thank you for your leadership and we hope we can find resolution in some way to save that oak forest.
Oh, Bob, thank you. I think you expressed the, the mind and feelings of every Alderman and certainly the mayor. So thank you. Well said. And, yes, ma'am.
My name is Rami Lopach and I live at 410 East Woodland Road in the first ward. It's, it's really good tonight to hear that you're taking into consideration options and, and I do have some questions. For example, with the regrading to a two to one slope, where does that slope ratio actually begin? Is that east-west section of the North Beach Access Road, will it be moved? Will the road actually be constructed over the stormwater pipe that would, that, that is open in the ravine right now? But the road could certainly be, be constructed in my mind, just like Highland Park has, has the same kind of construction that dates back 100 years. How far does the two to one slope actually come? How far away from the ring road does that two to one slope end? So that's a question that I have that I have not heard an answer to. A little bit off, but something I think the Parks Department is probably aware of, but the parking at the top of the stairs, at the top of the Belvedere stairs is temporary parking. You've seen the strings demarcating the gardens, but people are confused over there. I'm there almost every morning because I'm working on a garden over there and people are constantly asking me if they're gonna get a ticket. You know, the grass is dead there now. So we took parking out four years ago, we're putting it back in. It's an added cost that the Parks Department's gotta be aware of and take into account. Last, and this is a little, this is awkward, I guess, is the word, but could somebody explain to me? I read, Mike, I read your write-up in the city council minutes and I tripped over, over the name Forest Park Preservation Board. I'm thinking that that's a new name for what used to be the Forest Park Project Board. And the reason I bring it up is that the write-up in the city council meeting, meeting agenda took me back because that, as far as I know, that is not a public board. There's no minutes, there's no public access to that board. There's no way I can go and talk about these options. And yet, those options were only presented to this group. I think arguably you would know that I've been involved in watching the bluff as a garden designer for over 10 years. I wrote a 25-page report looking at every historic report about the bluff, the North Beach Access Road and the South Beach Access Road. That was probably eight years ago I wrote that report. And I'd just like to ask you to seek transparency in, in all that takes place in Forest Park. Now, again, I didn't, this has probably been reviewed at Public Works Committee meetings and at the Parks Board itself. I have not been to either one, so mea culpa. But I would just like to encourage, urge you that, that the public, and there is a small tribe of us that pays close attention to what's going on in the bluff. I'm also civic chairman of the Junior Garden Club of Lake Forest, so we have probably 100 members and I regularly give updates to them on city projects. I wouldn't be able to give them one on this one. And so I'm, I'm asking you to include the rest of us in what goes on in Forest Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rami. Obviously, a lot to consider and go over in the coming weeks and months and there will be plenty of meetings about it. I think that finishes that discussion. Next item of business is the opportunity for citizens to address council on non-agenda Seeing none, we have item number five is items for omnibus vote consideration. We have only 10 tonight and it's 9:25. So I think I will dispense with reading every one of these, but they range from council minutes and check register and very sup- and various approvals for various minor capital expenditures, plan commission, approval of some plan commission recommendations, and the building review board. And council has all this background information in your packet. As we've done before, any one item can be pulled out for a separate vote. But this is all pretty much business in the normal course of operation of the city. Any particular questions?
I just had a question. Oh, go ahead.
On number, thank you, on number six. This is a renewal of the credit card processing agreement. The credit card processing agreement was approved several years ago, and this is just a two-year renewal. So it doesn't need to, we don't, our normal process would not be to solicit competing bids.
We did an RFP and brought to the council three years ago and a recommendation to enter into an agreement with Automated Merchant Systems. The agreement provided for an initial three-year term and then a two-year renewal option at the city's discretion. We are very happy with AMS's services, and we are also not completely aware of the changes that the ERP implementation will bring in regards to credit card. So our recommendation is to engage AMS for the two-year renewal option, give us an opportunity over the next year to fully vet and understand what companies will do what credit card processing, and then move forward at the end of that two-year renewal period with probably some quotes. But BSNA, the ERP company, has two vendors that they work with on credit card processing. So we will probably be bringing forward another agreement that will be with one of those two providers that will do the credit card processing solely for the online transactions through BSNA software, and that will come probably in the fall. And then we'll look to whether or not that can all be aggregated and consolidated at some future date.
Is there an escalator in this renewal?
No, it's not. There's no.
Thank you.
Increase in the fees.
Got it.
Just a question on item number 10, which is approval of an agreement for enforcement of the Illinois Vehicle Code between the City of Lake Forest and Lake Forest College. This is more a question for the city attorney. I just was, it just seemed rather brief to me, and then I was wondering about some sort of waiver of liability and indemnification language between the two parties and maybe an assumption of risk. It just seemed to be missing some items, and I wondered if you might take just another look at that agreement to be sure whether we need those items or not.
We had included in our first draft that went to the college an indemnification and insurance provision, and they came back and expressed their concerns with that language. Given that it's a very short timeframe for the enforcement, it's a very limited scope. Staff and I talked about that the risk would be pretty minimal from the city's perspective for a short-term agreement. I agree, if you would have a longer term, if it were a year or more where you were enforcing, say, a shopping center or the college as a whole, we would certainly recommend having stronger language in there. But given the immediate nature of the need and the very limited scope of the term, we thought the risk was fairly low.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your response.
Any other questions on the omnibus agenda? Seeing none, any comments from the audience regarding the omnibus items? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the omnibus items as presented?
Some move.
Second.
So roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Next item of business is new business and consideration of a resolution in support of Senate Resolution 1746 to be presented by Robert Kiley, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This was an item that was discussed at the last city council meeting with State Senator Julie Morrison. Approximately two months ago, the staff at the Village of Glenview had prepared and working with, there's two state senators, a resolution that talks about support from the state of Illinois with respect to some of the rail projects that are underway, both from a freight standpoint and holding tracks, as well as the environmental impact statement. And the third component is something that has been talked about for some time, which is a plan to reroute freight traffic around the Chicago metropolitan area. And as State Senator Morrison reported at the last meeting, that a Senate resolution is really more of a request that's not binding on the state of Illinois or IDOT at that point in time, but it urges them to undertake these considerations as they move forward. So in your packet is a copy of the resolution that was adopted by the Village of Glenview. There was a section that was added to clarify the fact that there would be no commitment of dollars at this point in time because that question did come up from a couple of the Aldermen in the drafting of the, of this agenda item for this evening. So be happy to answer any questions that anybody has with respect to the proposed resolution supporting Senate Resolution 1746.
Any questions?
I do have some comments. I did have the opportunity of meeting Senator Morrison earlier when she was doing a program at Elwa Farm and had an opportunity to discuss this Senate resolution with her. And certainly, I support the concept that the city should support our state senator in this effort. In particular, in the resolution, it makes specific note of the impact of the EAD project, the negative impact on Glenview and the City of Lake Forest. And so as we've expressed to her when she was here, appreciation for representing our interests and making this effort. I was of the understanding that we would pretty much follow the lead of Glenview in expressing support. So I was personally surprised to see that somehow we included a section two that talked about funding. I didn't see where that section was really requested by anybody, not to my knowledge, and certainly not by Senator Morrison. It really is superfluous, and it's a matter that, you know, is subject for separate discussion to what extent we should be supporting Glenview in the effort of preventing the third track. And unfortunately, we did get recently some bad news where it does appear that the letter of Metra indicating that they felt they did not need it for their purposes did not have much of any effect on the powers that be. It does seem like they're going forward with the effort to add the third rail, and we've had discussions in the past, and we have it built into our resolution that we view that very seriously as having a negative impact on our city, on our community. One thing we don't want is more freight trains, more holding of freight trains, more freight traffic. It has a lot of negative consequences. So coming back to first, this resolution, I would like to offer an amendment that we, you know, simply say that what the Village of Glenview said, that the City of Lake Forest is in support of Senate Resolution 1746, and the mayor and the city manager are authorized to take any and all steps necessary to show the city's support. So I'd like to make that amendment. And I'd also offer for consideration an additional amendment because in light of what Senator Morrison was saying, that because of the timing, it was introduced as a Senate resolution, which is recognized as non-binding, but that did not preclude, and a matter of fact, there is a discussion of coming forward with legislation at the next legislative session that would implement this. And I think that's something we as a city should also encourage, and I'd like to see that as part of the resolution.
Comments?
I have no idea what the significance of this is.
There isn't any.
And that's really, that's not a derogatory comment. It's just, I have no idea the significance of this.
So you have no problem with the change?
I didn't say that. I don't understand the significance of what you just said or the significance of the proposed amendment, right?
The significant, I'll try again. The city, the Village of Glenview had before it the opportunity of expressing its support. It did. It did not have a section talking about expenditures and funds because it would be superfluous. And I think this is superfluous. And if anything, it maybe sends the wrong message that, you know, we don't view this support as something of importance that we're willing to lend any funding or expenditures for. And there's no reason why we need to make that statement in here. I don't think I can be any clearer.
I still don't understand it.
I have no idea what you're saying.
I have no idea what you're saying.
So Ray, you're suggesting that what's listed here is section two, that we, you would, are you recommending that we take section two out and replace it or just take it out?
I would recommend that we replace section one and two with verbiage simply saying that the City of Lake Forest supports Senate Resolution 1746 and asks the mayor and city manager to take the necessary steps to convey that, just as Glenview did, period. We don't need to go...
They have, they didn't have these whereas's and stuff?
Nope, I can read you there.
You know, I, can I, may I say something? Ray, I don't disagree. I'm really saying, I really don't understand the significance of it. This seems like this could be a significant conversation. I would like to postpone this until the next meeting. I'm perfectly willing to talk about it, but I'd like to have further background and information so I know kind of what I'm dealing with. And again, this is no criticism. It's just, it's clearly a lack of understanding on my part. And quite frankly, I'm very uncomfortable moving forward with something like this when I lack understanding at this late time of the evening.
I'm sorry for the late time of the evening, but I didn't have any control over that. But the, well, I made my statement, and, you know, Glenview has been very active, as you're aware, and I assume you've been privy to the communications by the action folks and by the Village of Glenview indicating different steps they've taken. But this is something that, you know, it's been on our agenda since my Ward Four meeting, where in Ward Four, the folks raised the question, can we support Senator Morrison's resolution? And as Mr. Kiley knows, we've been talking about that, and it's been postponed, postponed. Now, all we're looking for is a simple resolution saying we support it. It has two elements to it that should not present any problems to anybody. One is that if it's going to have, you know, holding tracks in your community for freight trains, it should have an impact statement. And secondly, it says that we should be encouraging bypass freight trains to use routes that are outside of the Chicagoland area, including outside of Lake Forest. You know, objectives that, to me, are, you know, something we should be, all be supportive of.
I felt Senator Morrison did a good job of explaining this resolution when she was before us. I don't see it as something that should be particularly controversial politically when a state senator asks for some support. I assume that it's so that she can move this measure forward at the state level confidently, indicating that various impacted communities also support her resolution, which gives her some additional influence in Springfield, where she is trying to potentially even move legislation forward that would state similar issues, that we should have an EIS for any additional rails that impact residential communities, and that we would encourage study that would route freight traffic west of some of these residential communities as well. I thought Senator Morrison did a fine job, and I think when a senator stands before us and asks for our support for something like this, that should be given certain weight.
I think part of the problem is we had a really full agenda tonight. We had this presented before. When it came to us before, we actually had the documentation of the language that's in the resolution with it. I don't think we have that tonight. We just have our resolution, but we don't have the Senate resolution. And, I mean, we had detail the last time we saw it, but we didn't have detail this time. And I mean, I think we all had, I mean, the packet tonight, if you really went through, which I think most of us did, the waterway preparation was overwhelming. So I'm just wondering if it would make sense to do this, to postpone this for one additional meeting and have the original material and this again, and raise suggestions and, you know, maybe put it in earlier in the agenda or something, where we're a little fresher. Because, I mean, I get the point of not trying to obligate us. On the other hand, I'd actually like to, I mean, I think it would be very desirable to have some pretty strong language about, I mean, I realize that it's not a binding resolution anyway, but nonetheless, I feel like this, the environmental impact statement, rather than just an environmental assessment, is a good idea. So I'd like to, I'd like to do it, but I'd like to do it with a little more clarity of what's going on, and I have to say, it's pretty late at night to have clarity about much. So I don't see, this, I don't think there's a time sensitivity to this. Is that right, Bob, that we don't have to get this done by next week?
Not even in session.
No, that's, I think that's what Senator Morrison told us when she was before you.
That was my understanding, too. So postponing it and...
Members probably the earliest, so we'll even take it up.
Yeah, so it seems like if we postponed it, I know that's pushing it down the road, but it doesn't seem like it's that big a deal. But I'd like to get it right. I mean, I'd like to support it, and I'd like to be a little clearer about it. Are you making a motion? I don't know. I'm just talking. I don't, do we need a motion? Do we need a motion to defer it for a later meeting? I'm happy to make such a motion.
I think, well, I'll look to the attorney. Yes?
Yeah, two different ways to do it. You could table it until the next meeting, or you could also direct maybe some amendments or changes to the resolution to be presented as well.
At the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If you're going to table it, table it to a date certain, so...
Okay, well, that would be the next meeting, wouldn't it? And it seems like Alderman Bushman is hoping that we would look at some modifications, and I'd like to see the original material that we got again because I didn't look at it before this meeting.
Is it possible for Alderman Bushman to work with the city attorney to come up with whatever's acceptable to him?
I would be happy to do that.
That'd be great.
I think I did share with the mayor some suggestions there. That's good.
Then, did you need that as a motion, or is that a motion to table? Is that what...
Okay.
I would be happy to make such a motion.
Second.
A favor.
Aye.
Opposed. That brings us...
I think we have to vote. Oh, no, did we vote?
We did.
I really am, we just did.
You are tired.
Sorry, I am so sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think there's any other additional items for discussion by council members. So is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Here. I didn't even get the feel right tonight.
Right on the money.
I was so right now on the money tonight. I mean, I was.